We are recording.
Good morning and welcome to the May 11th meeting of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee Agenda. The meeting will come to order. It is 9:32 a.m. I'm Lisa Herbold, Chair of the Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Suwan.
Present.
Chair Herbold.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you very much. So on today's agenda, we'll discuss two bills. The first is Council Bill 120065, which would transfer 911 call center positions and parking enforcement officer positions from the Seattle Police Department to the new Community Safety and Communications Center. We will also discuss Council Bill 119981 regarding the Seattle Police Department's budget. And we'll move into approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. At this time, we will transition into public comment, and I will moderate the public comment period in the following manner. Each speaker will be given one minute to speak. I will call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the council's website. We right now have about 40 people signed up to speak, which is why we are compressing the time to one minute to speak. If you have not yet registered but would like to do so, you can sign up before the end of the public hearing by going to the council's website. The link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, you'll hear a prompt, and once you've heard that prompt, you need to press star six to unmute yourself. Please begin speaking by stating your name and the item which you are addressing. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of the allotted time. And once the speaker hears the chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up your public comments. If the speakers do not end their public comments at the end of the allotted time, the speaker's mic will be muted after 10 seconds to allow us to hear from the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, please disconnect from the line. And if you plan to continue following this meeting, please do so via the Seattle Channel or the listening options on the agenda. In order to allow as many speakers as possible to speak, if there are no objections, I will amend the agenda to allow an additional 20 minutes of time for public comment, extending public comment from 20 minutes to 40 minutes. Hearing no objection, the agenda is amended for 40 minutes of public comment. With that, I will move into the speakers. And again, I will be calling on speakers your name and allow you to speak when you do so as present. The first speaker I have that is present is Shamir Tanna, followed by Cody Zelwisky. Shamir?
Hi, my name is Shamir Tanna. I'm a District 7 resident. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry. My name is Shamir Tanna. I'm a District 7 resident. I'm calling to ask City Council to amend 119981 to transfer 5.4 million from SPD to participatory budgeting and restore the $5 million proviso to its original form. SPD's funding has nothing to do with the consent decree. CL is still under the decree despite SPD's budget growing by over $150 million since CL entered into it. SPD for eight years has been trying to follow the decree's potential course of action for use of force to be consistent with the requirements of the Constitution. But alongside their ballooning budgets and staff levels, they've still failed to meet the decree's goal of ensuring SPD's use of force is constitutional. Just one example, SPD's data shows that SPD is still more likely to frisk and use force against persons of color than white people. I urge you to follow through on your original commitments. Hold SPD accountable for overtime abuse by allocating the full 5.4 million towards participatory budgeting and transfer the full $5 million of the proviso to the community. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cody Zelwisky, followed by Nanette Troyshima.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. My name is Cody Zelwisky. I'm a resident of District 4 and a medical researcher here in Seattle. I'm here representing the organization Decriminalize Nature Seattle. Our group seeks to have entheogenic psychedelic plant medicine be listed as the lowest law enforcement priority with protections for medical practitioners. The bill recently passed by the State Senate, SB 5476, is another regressive continuation of the drug war. If the City of Seattle acts now and passes the resolution decriminalizing entheogens and protecting medical practitioners who prescribe them, it can demonstrate there is a public appetite for a change in the status quo. Our organization has won the endorsement of dozens of local medical practitioners, drug law reform groups, and indigenous healers. Personally, I think the efficacy of these plant medicines in treating substance abuse, depression, PTSD amongst others, is unparalleled even relative to modern pharmaceutical medicine. The City of Seattle should join almost a dozen other municipalities such as Washington DC, Oakland, and Denver in passing these reforms. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Nanette Troyshima will be followed by Travana Thompson Wiley. Nanette, if you haven't already, can you hit star six, please?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Nanette Troyshima. I have been a parking enforcement officer for nearly 15 years. I'm also the president of the Seattle Parking Enforcement Officers Guild. I am calling today to support the legislation to transfer parking enforcement to the Community Safety and Communications Center. Civilianization of certain police functions is the wave of the future. Cities such as Los Angeles, Denver, San Francisco, Eugene, and Philadelphia all have programs that dispatch unarmed civilians as an alternative to armed officers. PEOs are the ideal candidates to do this work. We are a 60% BIPOC LGBTQ multilingual workforce that reflects the diversity of our community. We are trained in de-escalation tactics, familiar with police procedures, and most importantly, we are public servants who are committed to serving our community. Seattle residents have expressed a deep desire for changes in policing. Transferring the CSCC is a real step forward to reimagine policing and a better, safer Seattle for everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Travana Thompson Wiley, followed by Alice Marabe. Travana?
Hello, my name is Travana. I'm a District 5 resident and a member of Black Action Coalition and Decriminalize Seattle. I'm calling to demand City Council to amend CB 119981 to transfer 5.4 million from SPD to PB and restore $5 million proviso to its original form. If Black Lives Matter, I need to see City Council prove it. Black folks do not need performative allyship. We need investments into our community. The quality of Black Lives Matters, so stop investing in institutions that have historically brutalized and oppressed our community. Stop hiding behind the consent decree. The consent decree does not require staffing or funding levels. It just lays out a potential course of action to meet this goal while leaving Seattle with inappropriate flexibility to find solutions suitable for the community. I'm demanding that the City Council stand behind Black Lives and transfer the 5.4 million from SPD to PB. It's just unfortunate that we have to continue.
I have a very unstable connection here, just letting folks know. Next speaker is Alice Marabe, followed by Emma Knighton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Hi, my name is Alice Marabe. I'm a District 2 resident. I am calling to ask this committee to amend CB 119981 to transfer 5.4 million from SPD to participatory budgeting and restore the $5 million proviso to its original form. We need police budget accountability, and passing this bill in its original form would be a first step. SPD's overtime abuse to inflict violence on protesters marching in defense of Black Lives, they should not be rewarded for this violent waste of resources. SPD also has a long history of unchecked overtime abuse, and council's previous attempts to stop this pattern have failed. The substitute bill allows SPD to spend funds on whatever it wants and report back to council after the fact. Also, the proposed budget items would add significant capacity and resources to SPD at a time when council was working to shrink the size of the department and the scope of its duties. True civilian community safety teams must be employed outside of the police department. What we need to get there is serious investment in community solutions through participatory budgeting. Again, the consent decree is not about SPD's staffing levels or funding, so I urge you to follow through on your original commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emma Knighton, followed by Sharon Park. Emma?
Hello, my name is Emma Knighton, and I live in District 1. I am a trauma therapist and trained psychedelic assisted therapist. I'm here speaking today as a part of the Decriminalize Nature Seattle movement in hopes that you will adopt our resolution to decriminalize psychedelics in Seattle. As someone who specializes in working with people with complex PTSD and as a trauma survivor myself, I can personally attest to the benefits of psychedelics for mental health. Simply put, psychedelics saved my life, and I have watched them save the lives of many of my clients. As the legalization and medicalization efforts continue to move forward, we must acknowledge the fact that psychedelic assisted therapy will not be accessible to many of the people who need it most due to financial barriers and implications of systemic oppression. Decriminalizing psychedelics will ensure safe and affordable access for all people who might benefit and will open the doors for increased education around harm reduction and safe use. Councilmembers of Seattle, I urge you to do the right thing. Healing interpersonal and intergenerational trauma is the necessary path forward, and access to psychedelics is an integral part of this evolution.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Park, followed by Brian Evans. Sharon?
Hello, I'm Sharon Park, resident of District 3, and I'm urging council to amend CB 119981 to put an end to SPD's unchecked overtime abuse and defund SPD by the full $5.4 million. Allocate those funds towards participatory budgeting and restore the original proviso that would transfer the full $5 million from SPD's salary savings to community. There is a lot of attention on whether SPD's ability to comply with the consent decree is impacted by budget cuts, but this overlooks the major problems SPD's use of money and how the activities attached to those funds contribute to increases in police misconduct. SPD proposed to use the $5.4 million for programs like CSOs and mental health correspondents. These programs are shown to increase the likelihood of police violence against people experiencing mental health crises, effectively reversing the intended goal of the consent decree and ultimately posing a major threat to public safety. I'm urging council to please take an unwavering stance on public police budget accountability and set a new precedent that will support the health and vitality of our community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Evans, followed by Diane Green.
Good morning, council members. My name is Brian Evans. I'm a PEO in the City of Seattle and treasurer of the Seattle Parking Enforcement Officers Guild. I'm calling in support of the legislation that moves parking enforcement to the Community Safety and Communications Center. I support the move to the CSCC because I believe that civilian officers can be a part of the solution in the ongoing difficult challenge to reimagine policing. In November 2020, council recognized the unique opportunity, the chance to place a unit of dedicated, trained civilian officers into a newly formed city department that will focus on public safety. Council recognized that the bold step forward isn't the status quo, but to continue forging ahead to improve the ways the City of Seattle serves its residents. I hope this hasn't changed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Our next speaker is Diane Green, followed by Dez Chafon. Diane?
Good morning. My name is Diane Green. I'm a resident of District 3. I'm calling in support of transferring parking enforcement officers to the Public Safety Committee for Community Safety and Communications Center. Civilianization of certain police functions is the wave of the future. Seattle residents have expressed a deep desire for changes in policing. Transferring parking enforcement to the CSCC would be the first real steps to improving community policing and a better, safer Seattle. The Parking Enforcement Officers Group is a great deal more multicultural than the regular Seattle police force and is more representative of the community.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dez Chafon, followed by Rebecca Marquez. Dez?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Dez. I'm from Tacoma. Last time I spoke, I mentioned how entheogens have resurfaced my love for writing poetry, and I would love to share with y'all a poem I wrote while consuming psychedelics. "What is this feeling? It feels right, and I never want it to end. I can see the primordial light that is further and further from our grasp, so close if we can just break. Break the chains that once bound us, cast our fears aside and ride the storm into the mouth of the dragon. The dragon's mouth is but another dimension that we will eventually have to break from. Break the chains that bound us to the ground to erase us. So jump into the dragon's mouth and fight for the destiny that awaits us. Break the chains for the tired voice that was drowned out by the noise. Break the chains for a new world about to emerge from the ashes, like a phoenix left for dead but again it rises."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Marquez, followed by BJ Lask. Rebecca?
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Marquez, and I am a renter in District 6, calling in this morning to urge the council to hold SPD accountable and stand firm in cutting their budget by 5.4 million dollars. In the eight years that I have lived in this city, my belief that the police keep me safe has been completely destroyed. I have borne witness to police brutality, political cover-ups, and constant strategic maneuvering to ensure that those in power cannot be held accountable. However, I believe that good leadership can make a difference, that elected officials with strong principles are the key to a safe society. I have enormous respect for many of you sitting on the council today, and I implore you to ensure that our community has the opportunity to heal and move on from the horrors SPD has inflicted on us, not just over the last year of protests and tear gas and sweeps, but from the decades of harassment, obfuscation, and murder that came before. We need to create community safety that is not dependent upon an armed and militarized force, and we cannot do this without funds. Please hold SPD accountable for their actions, remove the $5.4 million from their budget, and transfer it to the community as you promised you would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is BJ Lask, followed by Christine Menke. And Christine is showing is not present, so if you can hear us. You're coming up next. BJ?
Hello, my name is BJ Lask. I'm a Ballard resident and a small business owner. I'm calling to ask City Council to amend CB 119981 to transfer 5.4 million from SPD to participatory budgeting and remove the $5 million proviso from the bill. Council President Gonzalez has talked about rebuilding public trust in government after news broke of the mayor and police chief's communications disappearing. Council following through on its commitments to hold SPD accountable for its overspending now can help restore that trust more than plans for future accountability. The goal of the consent decree is to ensure SPD's use of force is consistent with the requirements of the US Constitution. The rest of the decree is a potential course of action to meet that goal. Seattle has tried to follow that course of action for years without meeting the goal. SPD's budget has grown by over $150 million, and it still uses more force against BIPOC community members and kills people experiencing mental health crisis. The decree gives Seattle greater flexibility to find solutions for this community. It's time to take advantage of that ability to develop local solutions and accomplish the goal of the decree. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call for Christine Menke again, but she is showing not present. So the next speaker is Christopher O'Brien, and we'll come back to Christine if I show later on in the meeting that she becomes present. Christopher O'Brien will be followed by Jake Sisley. Christopher?
Hi there. My name is Christopher O'Brien, former resident of Seattle, current parking enforcement officer, and I'm calling in support of the Community Safety and Communications Center and transfer PEOs to that. Over the last six years as a PEO, I've developed several relationships with residents in the community in multiple different areas, as well as business owners in the community. And I think it's a good opportunity for us as PEOs to step up and meet the needs of the community. As I've listened to people in this public comment section, they are wanting a civilianized agency to come out and help them with these issues, and that's something that I believe that PEOs can step up and do. We have the training and the means and the will, and I believe that the City Council is in the right, correct path to make this happen. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Christopher. Our next speaker is Jake Sisley, followed by Brittany King. Jake?
Good morning. My name is Jake Sisley, and I am a parking enforcement officer of the city. I wanted to express my continued support for the move of our unit to the new Community Safety and Communications Center. When you think of public safety, you don't think of ESTOT. You think of the fire department. You think of the police department, and soon you will think of the Department of Community Safety. Completing the move of parking enforcement to the CSCC will enable the city to have the resources it needs to continue its mission of providing new and reimagined services to its citizens. We see ourselves as public servants, so please let us continue to serve. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Our next speaker is Brittany King, and Brittany will be followed by Bernard Bentley. Brittany?
Hi, my name is Brittany King, and I am also a parking enforcement officer, and I have been for the last three years. I'm also a black woman, and I grew up in South Los Angeles. I believe if City Council truly wants to reimagine policing, then supporting the move from parking enforcement to the CSCC is a step in the right direction. The Parking Enforcement Department is one of the most diverse departments in the city. Diversity and inclusion is something that communities are craving. Using our department to promote change and inclusion is the first step. PEOs have a unique advantage as we are the ears and eyes of the community. And because we are so diverse, highly trained, we can use our variety of life experiences to relate and establish better rapport with communities. PEOs are a powerful resource, and I hope that we can assist in any way. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernard Bentley, followed by Dan Otter. Dan is showing is not present. I will call his name again, but let's move forward with Bernard.
Hello, thanks again for the time allowed to speak. My name is Bernard Bentley. I'm a parking enforcement officer, also a board member with Parking Enforcement. He'll talk about the transition of the Parking Enforcement to the Community Safety and Communications Center. Well, I understand that the council has outlined some duties they want to see accomplished here in the city, and I believe Parking Enforcement is tailor-made to take out these responsibilities. Couple things. We know the city. We know the territory. We're on the streets every day. We basically have our finger on the pulse of the city. Collectively, we speak over 14 different languages, and we're skilled in self-defense, and we're better able to relate to a larger group of people. I believe that we can not only hit the ground running, but transition smoother than any other group of people inside the city. And I hope that you consider these points when making your decision. Thanks again. I yield my time.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Dan Otter, followed by Peter Condit. Dan, are you with us?
Hello, this is Dan Otter. Good morning, council members. Thank you for hearing my comment this morning. I'm a resident of District 6, and I'm speaking today as a member of Decriminalize Nature Seattle, asking you to adopt our resolution to decriminalize the gifting, gathering, and growing of plant-based psychedelics in Seattle. So my background, I'm a public health and addictions nurse, and medical uses for psychedelics are rapidly being recognized. Recent research has shown incredible potential for psychedelics in treatment of many mental health disorders, including depression, PTSD, substance use disorder, and anxiety. And the good news is that in the next few years, psilocybin and MDMA are expected to be able to legally prescribe for certain diagnoses. The bad news is that access will be linked, will be a privilege that's linked to having adequate insurance.
Sorry about that. Let's move on to our next speaker. Next speaker is Peter Condit, and Peter will be followed by Gareth Small. Gareth is currently showing is not present, but we'll come back to him after we hear from Peter.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Peter Condit, and I live in District 4. I urge the committee not to move forward with Council Bill 119981 until it has been amended to hold SPD accountable for the full $5.4 million it overspent, being violent last summer, and to reinstate at least a $5 million proviso on the SPD's 2021 salary savings. If you move forward with this bill in its current form, you are contributing to a culture of non-accountability, where police can fudge their timesheets, where police can use tear gas after it's prohibited by City Council, and where police can murder Black and Indigenous people like Charlene Lyles and John T. Williams. Don't think SPD won't notice. They will read loud and clear if their overtime abuse and violence does not hurt their bottom line. The purpose of the consent decree, for its part, is to address patterns of violence. It would therefore be a violation of the consent decree not to defund SPD by at least $5.4 million and reinstate a proviso on their ongoing salary savings as a consequence for their overtime abuses. Ultimately, shifting priorities such that SPD complies with the consent decree is up to them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gareth Small, but Gareth is showing is not present. I'll come back Gareth if he shows present later. So we'll move on to Tatiana Quintana. And Tatiana will be followed by Emma McVeigh. Tatiana?
Good morning. Can you hear me? Oh, sorry. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Tatiana Quintana, and I live in District 2, and I'm asking for Seattle City Council to adopt Decriminalize Nature Seattle's resolution to decriminalize psychedelics in Seattle, and also that I stand in solidarity with reinvesting the $5.4 million that was brought up earlier today by Decriminalize Seattle back into our community. Trauma in a person, decontextualized over time, looks like personality. Trauma decontextualized in a family looks like family traits. Trauma in a people looks like culture. That's a quote from my grandmother's hand by Resma Menakem. Our communities are suffering from worsening mental health issues and epidemic levels of problematic substance dependency. Psychedelics are proven, reliable, and effective alternatives to help, and it is our responsibility to create models and frameworks that will keep these substances acceptable to all. Our gather, gift, and grow model will ensure this right, and I hope that Seattle City Council will invest in our communities and divest from harmful traumatizing systems, feet, and racist policies.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emma McVeigh, and Emma will be followed by Flora Wright. Emma?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma McVeigh. I'm a District 7 resident, and I'm calling to ask City Council to amend Council Bill 119981. I want to reiterate that SPD's funding has nothing to do with the consent decree. Seattle is still under the decree despite SPD's budget growing by over $150 million since Seattle entered into it. The mayor and SPD are trying to use bias and use of force trainings to pressure you to go back on your commitment. Please don't give in. Remember that your commitment is to this community, and also, trainings do not work. We cannot create safer communities by continuing to fund the police. Council knows that the way to end violent policing is to reallocate resources to the community. Think of all of the good we can do with this money. I urge you to follow through on your original commitments. Hold SPD accountable for their overtime abuse by allocating the full $5.4 million towards participatory budgeting and transfer the full $5 million of the proviso to community. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is- Thank you. Our next speaker is Flora Wright, and Flora um is um uh next, but followed by Dana Lastamato, and Dana is not showing as present, so I will return to Dana after hearing from Flora and see if Dana's with us. Flora?
I'm Flora, a resident of District Three. The committee must return to the original version of C B eleven ninety-nine eighty-one. The substitute bill is not an improvement. The mayor and S P D were the primary people consulted, not constituents. They reverse eight point four million dollars back to S P D that had been earmarked for participatory budgeting and guts council's only mechanisms to force justification for S P D spending. Making promises to defund the police and statements about commitments to justice and channeling criticism into policy on April twentieth and backtracking with a substitution is performative. I urge you to follow through on your original promise, and I join everyone who calls today to say, amend eleven ninety-nine eighty-one to return to the original version that reduces S P D's twenty-twenty-one budget by five point four million dollars and transfers it to participatory budgeting, and reinstate the five million dollar proviso that would transfer S P D's salary savings to participatory budgeting, which must be designed and held by community, not by the city. Your commitments are clear. We reject the substitute bill because there is no substitute to police budget accountability. I yield my time.
Thank you. Um, still showing Dana Lastamato not present. I will come back to Dana if Dana joins us at a later time during public comment. So our next speaker is Naveen Jasti, and Naveen will be followed by Coco Weber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Naveen. Thank you.
Um, Naveen, I live in District Five. I'm calling to ask you to return to the original version of Council Bill eleven ninety-nine eighty-one. Please follow through on your original commitment to hold S P D accountable for their overtime abuse by allocating the full five point four million towards participatory budgeting and transferring the full five million of the police to community. I'm a student, and I know a lot of other young people who don't vote because it feels like our political process is not set up to actually listen to us. Putting the additional eight point four million into participatory budgeting shows that the city is serious about listening to our needs and holding S P D accountable. Participatory budgeting is exciting because it allows us to participate in collectively deciding Seattle's priorities. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Coco Weber will be followed by Kyle Adams. Coco?
Hello, this is Coco, a District Four resident. The police are engaged in a bullying campaign with the city civilians organizers in the council to maintain their grip of power over the city. The original C B one-one-nine-nine-eight-one was made by the council in a commitment to the civilians to address S P D's pattern of violence and overtime abuse, which was used to brutalize protesters in the fight for black lives in our city. The consent decree has proven itself ineffective, yet it gives the city flexibility. Structure of the consent agreement states in item one, the parties intend the agreement to provide clear measurable obligations while at the same time leaving Seattle with appropriate flexibility to find solutions suitable for the community. The requirements of the agreements identify the goals that must be achieved, the mechanisms to achieve them, and specific elements that must be addressed. However, within the requirements of the agreements, quote, "Seattle will have the ability to develop local and cost-effective solutions." That's what people's participatory budget, and I ask you to maintain your commitment to the people and stand strong and not give in to police bullying.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kyle Adams, and Kyle will be followed by Shane Milhouse. Kyle?
Hi, good morning, council members. My name is Kyle Adams. I'm a parking enforcement officer in the city of Seattle. I'm calling in support of legislation that moves parking enforcement to the Community Safety and Communication Center. I support the move to the C S C C because I am excited for the opportunity to explore other ways P E Os can serve the residents in the city of Seattle. The original legislation is a step forward in reimagining how civilian officers can make an impact and its promise to the residents of Seattle to do the hard work that serves them better. In addition, this is truly taking a step forward and leading in the way this important national conversation about community safety goes. Thank you for your time, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shane Milhouse, and Shane uh will be followed by Iris McCombe if Iris uh becomes present uh on the next speaker. Go ahead, Shane.
Remember to press star six, Shane.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. Hi, my name's Shane Milhouse. I'm with District Three and Decriminalize Nature, um encouraging the city council to uh pass a resolution similar to the one in Oregon. Um, I'm in support of microdosing psychedelics. Um, I found that it keeps me humble, mindful, and positive, and stops me from slipping back into uh treatment-resistant depression. Um, I don't think anyone should be um legally penalized for using natural medicines or their uh restriction of their cultivation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Iris McCombe, but Iris is still not showing as present, so we'll move down to Emma Lower, and Emma will be followed by Ben Circombe. Emma?
Hi, council. This is Emma Lower. I'm a resident in West Seattle, and I'm calling today to restore Council uh Council Bill one-one-nine-nine-eight-one to its original form. Um, as discussed in the March tenth council mem- council meeting, uh, there, this issue is really not about staffing, and I'd like to quote a statement from Councilmember Lewis directly when he said, "There is widespread confusion amongst members of the public and amongst certain editorial boards that what we are debating right now is going to have a tangible impact on patrol members, and it won't." So this is not about staffing. Uh, the consent decree, in fact, is about accountability for S P D, and that's exactly what the original council bill is about. Um, it's really, it's about making sure that the overtime spent by S P D will not be uh, will not be, we won't hold, you, you won't give them the ability to.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ben Circombe, and Ben will be followed by Eric Fallinger. Ben?
Hello, my name's, hello, my name is Ben Circombe. I'm from District Three, and I'm speaking today as part of Decrim Nature Seattle. No hope that the city adopts our resolution, decriminalizes psychedelics. I'm also speaking in support of C B one-one-nine-nine-eight-one. We have lost the war on drugs. Drug criminalization has ruined lives, filled prisons, has been used as an excuse to ostracize and discriminate against minority populations. Here in Seattle, the median wage, including overtime for our police, is a hundred sixty-four thousand dollars a year. Do you think putting more money into this is going to fix anything? We need to rethink our justice system. We also need to rethink how we can treat mental health. I've benefited significantly in eliminating my depression and helping with my anxiety for small uses of psilocybin. Right now, through the use of uh, uh, through the eyes of the city and the state, I'm a criminal for using this therapy and overcoming my weaknesses. Something that has benefited my life so greatly could land me in jail, where I would lose my job and I would probably not be able to financially recover. Instead of putting more money into a failed campaign in drug enforcement, we need to strengthen our community and use the money for mental health treatment that works. We can't put shiny new rims on a
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is Eric Fallinger, and Eric will be followed by Julia Buck.
Uh, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi. So my name is Eric Fallinger. I live in District Seven, and I'm calling um to ask the council pass the original version of C B one-one-nine-nine-eight-one. Uh, the court monitor has told you that a funding cut may impact the department's compliance with the consent decree, but S P G is choosing to hold that compliance hostage by tying consent decree initiatives to that specific chunk of funding. That choice demonstrates why we should cut their funding in the first place, and that is the police department doesn't care about the residents of Seattle. They've demonstrated this indifference in how they handle their protests and how they handle gassing residential neighborhoods and people in their homes, how it handles wellness checks, and how it would rather arrest protesters for chalk than go after someone who put a two-year-old in a hospital. Still at large, by the way. Officers can't even wear masks during the pandemic because they don't feel like it. Just a couple of weeks ago, S P D had to backtrack and cancel an officer benefit hosted by an anti-LGBT organization, and when they were asked for comments on that event, the department's P R spokesperson had a lot more to say about the person who leaked details from that event to the council than the content of the organization.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julia Buck, and Julia will be followed by Lynn Judge if Lynn becomes present. Showing um currently unpresent. Go ahead, Julia.
Hello, my name is Julia Buck. I'm a resident of District Six and um a member of Seattle D S A, and I'm calling to encourage the council um to send the eight point four million um from S P D um and send it back to the participatory budgeting um process, including the uh five million dollar proviso. Um, I am, the consent decree was um designed to bring S P D into compliance with the U S Constitution. The consent decree has not been complied with for eight years. Um, we have attempted to follow the course of action laid out, um but the consent decree does allow us, quote, um, yet appropriate flexibility to find solutions suitable for this community. Um, I would encourage council to divest from S P D. Um, the crisis intervention training um has, has not worked.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is um Lynn Judge, and still seeing Lynn not present. Uh, so we'll move on to Alice Lockhart, and following Alice Lockhart is Stephanie Kerikoffe. Alice?
Good morning, council. I'm Alice Lockhart. I usually speak for Three Fifty Seattle. Three Fifty Seattle stands in solidarity with demands to defund Seattle police, but I'm here today as an elder in District Five. Recent testimony to this committee asking for increased police presence downtown and elsewhere is problematic when so many suffer so much at the hands of S P D. We elders can trust in our community to keep an eye out for us. Yesterday, I took a bad fall from my bike. It wasn't the first time, and as always, a helpful citizen rushed to see if I was okay. My only thought lying on the ground was that I hope no one would call nine-one-one because he was a black man, and the last thing I wanted was for the police to come and him to suffer trauma or even harm. In my thirty years in Seattle, I've witnessed countless instances of S P D harm caused to people of color, homeless neighbors, neighbors in mental health crises, and peaceful protesters. True safety for elders and others will never come from the hands of S P D. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Kerikoffe, followed by Aiden Carroll. Stephanie?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Kerikoffe, and I'm a District Three resident. I'm calling to ask City Council to amend C B one-one-nine-nine-eight-one to transfer five point four million from S P D to participatory budgeting and to restore the five million dollar proviso to its original form. S P D's funding has nothing to do with the consent decree. Seattle is still under the decree despite S P D's budget growing over a hundred fifty million since Seattle entered it. The decree came from the Department of Justice, finding S P D engages in a pattern or practice of using unnecessary or excessive force in violation of the Constitution. The goal, the goal of the decree is to ensure S P D's use of force is consistent with the requirements of the U S Constitution. The consent decree does not require any staffing or funding levels. It just lays out a potential course of action um to meet the goal while leaving Seattle with appropriate flexibility to find solutions suitable for the community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aiden Carroll, followed by Katie Gendry. Aiden?
Thank you. My name is Aiden Carroll. I am a District Six resident, and I'm calling to ask City Council to amend C B one-one-nine-nine-eight-one to transfer five point four million from S P D to participatory budgeting and restore the five million dollar proviso to its original form. Um, because in this case, S P D is actively defying what you told them and daring you to follow through on, on what you said. It's as if you went to a restaurant with a friend and, I don't know, the friend said, "Oh, I only have twenty bucks in, in cash," and I, and, and you said, "Well, I, I, I'm sorry. I don't have the capacity to, to, to pay for I, anything uh, uh, more than that," but, but they said, like, they went orders, like, maybe a steak or something, and then, and then they said, "Well, can you please, can you please pay for it?" And you said, "I told you not to," and then you start thinking, "What if I..."
Thank you, Aiden. Our next speaker is eight, uh, Katie Gendry, followed by uh Alana Lessing, and Alana will be our last speaker. Katie?
Well, my name is Katie Gendry. I live in District Six. Um, I'm calling to transfer five point four million out of S P D's twenty-twenty-one overtime allocation and into participatory budgeting, also decriminalize psychedelics in Seattle. Um, we cannot permit S P D to spend more on overtime than allowed in its budget. If black lives matter to you, then you would be defunding S P D. Increasing S P D's budget and overtime spending has been cited by the A C L U as a public safety issue in just twelve days. S P D's overtime costs totaled six point three million, and there were fifteen thousand complaints of misconduct and a joint lawsuit. Um, how are you holding S P D accountable for misconduct by this recent proposal? Why are you giving S P D this blank check as it relates to overtime? It is clear by allowing S P D to keep a majority of its overtime spending that you are not holding police accountable to their violence and the police accountable to uh the human rights violations, and you're okaying S P D unleashing hell on protesters, and that you really do not care about holding police.
Thank you. Anna Lessing? Uh, Lana Lessing?
Here's Alana has
Star six, Alana?
Lana is not present now. She
Okay.
Well, you have a couple who weren't present before, but they are now present prior to the list.
And I believe we did um exhaust our speaking time, our extended speaking time. And so with that, thank you, Alex. With that, we will move into closed call comment and move into the rest of our agenda for today. Thank you. Um, clerk, will you please uh read the next item into the agenda?
Uh, Agenda Item One, Council Bill one-two-zero-zero-six-five and Ordinance relating to emergency communications, amending Ordinance one-two-six-two-three-seven, which adopted the twenty-twenty-one budget, transferring positions from the Seattle Police Department to the Community Safety and Communication Center and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts.
Thank you so much. So um just a little bit of background first. I want to thank everyone who called in this morning, especially the uh parking enforcement officers who consistently pushed the council along with other members of the community that we've heard from, uh advocating on behalf of the parking enforcement officers um workforce-driven vision for reimagining uh public safety and allow uh civilianized workforce uh to take a greater role. Um, a civilianized workforce um that is sixty percent uh BIPOC. So the bill before us would do two things. It would transfer uh nine-one-one call center positions and, and P E Os from the police department to the Community Safety and Communication Center. Um, in the budget process, we unanimously passed Ordinance twelve sixty-two thirty-three, uh, and that was the ordinance that established the new Community Safety and Communication Center and included both nine-one-one dispatch and P E Os. The creation of the uh Community Safety Communication Center is intended to help reframe how the city provides for community safety and respond to the council's interests and exploring expanded duties for the P E Os. Um, and with that, I think um I will um hand it over to um, to uh central staff to uh walk us through um other elements of, of the bill, and I'm, I will maybe pepper you with some questions or some additional background. background. Lisa, will you please introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa K., Central Staff. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen to show the council bill here in case people want, have specific questions about the text specifically. So council member, I think you gave a good overview of what the bill would do. I would emphasize again that this bill is consistent with Ordinance 126233, which council passed last fall that created this new center, and with the adopted 2021 budget, which anticipated today's legislation that transfers these positions by June 1, 2021. I would note that the executive has appointed an interim director to the center and expects to request additional administrative support in the proposed 2022 budget. I'll just advance the bill to show you a couple of the pertinent sections. This is on page six of your agenda packet. I would also note that my staff report is on page 50 of your agenda materials. So looking at the bill itself, Section 1 makes a technical change, which adds a purpose statement to the budget summary level that authorize expenditures that align with 911 and PEO functions. It's a bookkeeping function that needs to be in place to be able to spend the money. Section 2, then, is about 39 pages of transferring of the positions. So there's 149 911 call center positions and 120 positions from the Parking Enforcement Officers Unit. Section 3 is a ratify and confirm clause that would allow the executive to take actions consistent with this legislation prior to its effective date, which will be after the June 1, 2021 deadline in the budget proviso, because as you'll see in Section 4, the bill is effective 30 days after the mayor's approval. That basically completes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lisa. Can you talk a little bit about the importance of the June 1 date?
So the June 1 deadline was anticipated because the... Well, let me start back a little bit of history. When the mayor originally proposed creating a new center, she had a June 1 start, or January 1 start date, which was found to not be feasible. When you're moving the 911 center, you need to have a particular number designation that the federal government provides. It takes a long time to get that paperwork in place. So Ordinance 126233 provided the time, said that the 911 transfer could start 30 days after that number was obtained, but that the June 1 date would be the transfer for the Parking Enforcement Officers, just to give time to get everything organized.
Thank you. And so that was a change that the council made when we acted during the budget process. We changed it to June 1 from what the mayor had proposed in January because it was not determined to be feasible. We also, at that time, changed the mayor's proposal from what was being called the Seattle Emergency Communication Center, because at that point, it was envisioned only to house 911. And we changed the name from the sort of narrowly focused Seattle Emergency Communication Center to the Community Safety Communications Center to incorporate the council's sort of broader vision of what this new department could do as part of the reimagining public safety. And let's see here. I'm just checking to see if there are any important points that we need to make about this that have not already been made by so many of the folks who have been, who've joined us today to speak. And I'm also looking to see if any of my colleagues on the council have any questions. And I'm not seeing any raised hands here. Councilmember, Council President Gonzalez?
Thank you so much, Chair Herbold. I just wanted to flag a couple of concerns that I have about this legislation. So the legislation is originally transmitted, included the council's desire and wishes to move the 911 call center employees to the new Community Safety and Communications Center. It did not include also moving Parking Enforcement Officers to the Community Safety and Communications Center. So there was another bill that proposed moving the Parking Enforcement Officers to the Seattle Department of Transportation rather than the Community Safety and Communications Center. And now we have before us a bill that merges these two bills into one, but transfers all of these functions that we're discussing, including the PEOs, to the new Community Safety and Communications Center. So I'm just flagging that, you know, based on my conversations with folks at SDOT and other folks within, you know, the city coalition, that I continue to think that the original two bills as proposed by the mayor were headed in the right direction and, you know, continue to think that the PEOs should go to SDOT as individuals who are primarily, whose functions are primarily designed currently to manage the right of way. And I think it just makes a lot more sense, sort of from an administration and operations perspective, to have those functions go to SDOT rather than to the Community Safety and Communications Center. So, you know, unfortunately, I just can't, while I support the underlying legislation of moving the 911 call center employees to the Community Safety Communications Center, I'm not currently supportive of the shift of the PEOs to the CSCC and, you know, would be interested in sort of resolving that particular concern before the full council has an opportunity to consider this council bill.
Thank you. And if I could just take a quick minute to respond to that. The reason why we introduced this bill to replace the bills that were referred by the executive is that the bills that were referred to the executive, the second bill that transferred the PEOs to SDOT was just simply not in alignment with the vote that we took unanimously during the budget process. We all voted on the ordinance that not only changed the name from a very narrowly focused department that was only going to house 911, we changed the name from only a communication center to a community safety and communication center. And the ordinance itself included the intent to transfer both 911 dispatch and PEOs as well. And so I worked to have Lisa develop a replacement bill that reflected the council's already established intent. And again, and it's not just the council's intent, it is a large workforce of over 100 PEOs who are telling us that their preference is to go from SPD to this new division. Without PEOs going to this new division, the new division will only hold 911. It will be that narrow, narrowly focused department. And it will not be, you know, again, capturing the leadership and the direction that we are hearing from a workforce-driven vision. So I'm hoping that we can move this forward today, and there is some urgency as it relates to the June 1 date, but look forward to having ongoing conversations. There are other comments? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for bringing this forward. This overall project of the future role of our Parking Enforcement Officers and some kind of heightened civil enforcement officer position is something that I remain extremely interested in, and I appreciate this next step to move this conversation forward to that next phase. Two years ago, the City of Philadelphia voted to essentially put the same concept into their charter, to elevate their equivalent of Parking Enforcement Officers into a position that would take on a bigger civil enforcement role to better serve the people of Philadelphia and take care of some of those issues that are citable but not criminal in nature. You know, one of my concerns here is that there continues to be some disagreement in the workforce, because it is true that the Rank and File Parking Enforcement Guild, which I have been talking to and I'm very supportive of, has a divergent view from the unit that represents the supervisors. And, you know, that, to me, indicates that there is still division despite the Rank and Files position, which, you know, as a Rank and File union member, I feel really deeply about. But, you know, it is not a united workplace. So I would appreciate more time to sort that out. I saw the email from Sean Van Ike this morning, you know, Sean, who was unable to make it for public comment but represents the supervisors through PROTEC 17, who just indicated some lingering concerns. And I would like to see, before we go forward with this move, what we can do to reconcile some of the concerns where there's division in this workplace. Because I do want to see it go to this new department. I want to see it form a nucleus of this new department. I want to see a future where a lot of the things that are currently being done that are noncriminal in nature by sworn, uniformed, and armed officers can instead be done by this diverse workforce who has a strong track record and history of community rapport and involvement, as we heard in the public comment. But I want to make sure we do it in a way that is not dividing the management and rank and file of this unit, both of which are represented, and just setting up a difficult transition. So, you know, maybe that can be worked out with a little bit more time to figure out more of PROTEX's concerns in this, because I do think it would be a shame if this unit simply went to SDOT where their future role was more foreordained and more constrained implicitly by their placement in that unit. But I also don't want to move them forward when there is not unanimity among the workforce in question in taking on this, blazing a new trail in a department that we are creating from scratch. So, you know, I think that that's a request similar to Councilmember Gonzalez, to maybe hold this a little bit, to have some of those conversations with PROTEC, rather than take action today.
I believe there are some implications that we should consider as it relates to holding the legislation. I've mentioned the June 1 date, that the council moved from the mayor's proposed January 1 date. And so we are striving to meet that goal and want to just talk about a little bit if there are unintended consequences of a delay. Lisa?
Yes. So you'll see on my staff memo that I did identify some consequences should the council not take any action. Basically, that will mean that either the executive and/or the council will need to pass some legislation that would provide for an ongoing cash flow so that the executive could pay the salaries of the PEOs if they stay in SPD. Because right now, the council's proviso would have that funding stream cut off June 1 and transferred to the CSCC. So I had reached out...
As designed by the council, right? Right? I mean, that we were anticipating this as a next step that we need to take, and we wanted to ensure that we could take it by June, again, instead of by January, as previously proposed by the mayor.
And I did reach out to CBO to find out if they had a provisional plan, and they didn't have anything in place yet, but there would need to be some action taken.
Right. And I also want to add, Lisa, I believe that the payment issue also affects 911 dispatch as well, not just Parking Enforcement Officers.
If the 911 was not transferred by June 1, yes, that'd be true.
Correct.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, I would, I mean, we've got some time between now and June 1 as a full council meeting that we would have a discussion, but I'm inclined to want to move this forward. Councilmember Lewis and Council President Gonzalez, I see both of your hands up, though. Let's hear Councilmember, Council President Gonzalez, let's hear from you first.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to address a couple of the points that I'm hearing right now in this discussion, which I appreciate the opportunity to be able to have it in this committee. The first thing I wanted to say is, in terms of the argument that the council unanimously supported a position before to move PEOs out of the Seattle Police Department and into a community safety department, I don't dispute that that occurred. I will say, however, that in, you know, sort of the subsequent months, of which many have passed by, I've had an opportunity to more deeply engage, both on some of the operations and management concerns being expressed by SDOT, but also in terms of having ongoing conversations with representatives from PROTEC and also getting a better understanding of SPAG's position. Now, I will say that, as a reminder, even when we were taking this particular issue into an under consideration, my memory is that even then, there were expressions of concerns by the two bargaining unit representatives within the Parking Enforcement Unit about where this function should be placed. And so I think that unfortunately, those concerns haven't been reconciled or resolved. And in this case, you know, it feels like we are moving this forward in a manner that isn't allowing us a better opportunity to just reconcile those differences between those two bargaining units. So I wanted to address that. Secondly, Councilmember Herbold, Chair Herbold, you mentioned that if we don't move the PEOs into the Community Safety Division, then it'll be a very narrow scoped, you know, department. And I just want to remind us that this is sort of a first step in building this new division. And certainly, right now, the division would include the 911 Communications Center. But it also could, in order to fulfill the community safety component of the title of this division, we could also transfer, and I think the intent is to transfer other functions into the division, it's just going to take us a little bit of time to do that. So things like the Community Service Officers, which I believe should be transferred over to this department, you know, crisis intervention teams, mental health providers, I think those are other functions that can and will likely find their way to this division. So I don't want to, you know, leave the public with the understanding that if the public, sorry, if the Parking Enforcement Officer function isn't transferred into this division, that it's effectively just a 911 Communications Center. I don't think that that is the vision, and I don't think that's what, where we will end up with this division ultimately. And then lastly, on the June 1, 2021 deadline, I appreciate, Lisa, you offering... I appreciate, Lisa, you offering a little bit more information as it relates to that deadline. I mean, I think you know, I think these PEOs would have to be paid regardless of which division they're in, so I don't understand what the problem is. What is the, what are you trying to flag? I mean, is, were we planning on not paying them if we move them out of SPD? I don't understand what the concern is. It's not like we're just not going to pay them after June first. So what's the, what's the, what's the issue?
There was a relatively complicated budget proviso adopted by council in the twenty twenty one budget that recognized, that basically set up appropriation authority to pay positions out of the CSCC, but then provided temporary authority for SPD to pay for these positions up until June one. That temporary authority expires June one unless council passes legislation to some other effect. So that would mean that the appropriation authority remains with the CSCC, but the positions remain in SPD, which presents a problem. And so that's where the executive would need to, or the council would need to. The executive could propose a fix, council would likely need to pass legislation to make a temporary patch.
Effectively, it would be to extend the temporary authorization.
That would be one of the ways to do it, yeah.
Okay. And, okay, so that's helpful to know. So I just continue to be very, very concerned about sort of this division between the parking enforcement officers and the parking enforcement officer supervisors and really think that we gain a lot by having a unified effort here. I don't know if we're going to be able to accomplish that. I know that we have all been collectively in our own rights working on trying to figure out how to reconcile the differences between those two units. I do, you know, I do see Sean Van Ike's email to us today talking about how from Protec's perspective, SDOT, he writes, quote, "SDOT is the natural fit for the PEO unit and in fact, every single example provided by SPAG of a similar move by other metropolitan cities in the US have had their respective PEO units transitioned to their city's departments of transportation." And so I just want to make sure that we are you know, doing something that is consistent with what the models are across the country. And again, I am persuaded by the arguments that I have heard from Protec and SDOT about needing to place the PEO unit and the function within SDOT and was just sort of hopeful that we'd be able to end up in that place. But I understand, Councilmember Herbold, do you have an interest in moving this forward? And if you want to move out of committee? Today, I would plan on voting no on this bill unfortunately at this point, but would be as a result of a divided report, give us a couple more weeks to sort of see if we can sort this out. But it would effectively get it out of your committee.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is just a question for central staff. Could you, Lisa, maybe go over a little bit? Like, are there any practical implications in terms of depending on the department? You know, what the day to day of the parking enforcement officers is going to be? You know, like where their equipment is stored, how they're dispatched. You know, HR, I mean, just all those kind of considerations of a workplace. Is there any relevant consideration between the choices that we're making? Because I do think it would be good to just hear practically speaking, what the bottom line is.
I think one of the bigger factors that has come into play in terms of practicality is the question of whether the PEO's roles could be expanded. And I think that question is the same regardless of where the, frankly, regardless of where the unit ends up. Because a lot of those, the duties that the officers are requesting authority for are subject to bargaining. And that bargaining is going to take a long time, very likely. So I think those changes are not something that are likely to happen quickly. In terms of an administration, I've heard SDOT argue that they have the administrative structure set up and you know, they're a functioning department with divisions and back of house support for HR and finance. So they're arguing they're ready to go right away to absorb a new unit. At the same time, Acting Interim Director Lombard for the Community Safety and Communications Center is working on setting up that structure also and has retained some temporary personnel to help get things going. So that's as much, I don't know the, much more in terms of what it takes to set up a whole new department. But the council's intent has been apparent in setting up this new community safety center since, you know, December of last year. So there has been time for the executive to get the pieces in play. Did that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes, I mean, it sounds like, just to rephrase to make sure, I mean, it sounds like you know, there's an argument that SDOT is just better situated because it's an existing department to kind of absorb this unit. But it doesn't really, it doesn't sound like the day to day of the parking enforcement officers will be all that affected regardless of the choice. I mean, it doesn't really sound like there's going to be an issue and gap of service or anything like that based on the decision we make here. Kind of hearing, I mean, it totally stipulate to the expanded role and duty of the officers. Like, yeah, I appreciate that that's going to take a considerable amount of additional work regardless of where they go. But in terms of the immediate implications, it doesn't really sound like there's that big of a difference.
Both entities would have to come up with a new working agreement on how they are going to interact with the police department. Because the parking enforcement functions do overlap with the patrol functions. And so there would need to be some new agreements regardless of where the department.
Go ahead, Alex.
I was just, and I don't want to speak for the executive, but in my conversations with executive staff, they have indicated that those day to day operations, Councilmember Lewis, would remain the same regardless if the the unit was transferred to SDOT or CSCC. For example, like the offices they operate out of would be maintained regardless of department.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Much appreciated. Let's see, what else, I think that's relevant here. I also believe, Lisa, we allocated some additional funding beyond what was proposed for HR functions for the new department. Is that correct?
Those had been intended to be as part of that appropriation, but that was not the case. That's part of what the executive will be asking for more support in the next budget.
Okay, that's helpful. All right, I'm just looking to see if there are any more hand raising. Then that this is very clearly going to be a divided report. That hopefully will give us a little time to have some continued conversations before full council on May forty, I believe it is. Thank you. And so with that, if there's no further discussion.
That would be May nineteenth, I think, Councilmember. Two weeks from today.
No, it'd be, is that a holiday?
It's, yeah, there's a holiday.
Got it.
And it's, I think it's two Mondays.
Okay, right, so I'm looking at, oh, if, so May twenty fourth, it looks I'm sorry, I only heard the fourth part.
Council rules provide that unless otherwise authorized by the president and the committee chair, the committee report shall be reported to the second regular city council meeting after the date of the recommendation.
Okay, so that would be May twenty fourth. With that, I will move Council Bill twelve zero zero six five as listed on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second?
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, would please call the roll.
Council President Gonzalez?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Swan?
Abstain?
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Two in favor, one opposed, two abstained.
Thank you. And let's move forward and, oh, go ahead.
I want to be clear that this does move forward with two yeses, the abstentions don't count against the vote.
It turns out it would move forward even if it failed.
That's right.
Okay, there we go.
It would just, in that case, would just move forward with a do not pass recommendation. In this case, it does move forward and we will hold it until May twenty fourth and have some ongoing conversations until then. Will the court please read item number two into the record?
Media item, Agenda number two, Council Bill one one nine nine eight one, An Ordnance Amending An Ordnance, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance one two six two three seven, which adopted the twenty twenty one budget, including the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six capital improvement program, changing appropriations to various departments and budget control levels and from various funds in the budget and adding or modifying provisos.
Thank you, Alex. So just some quick introductory comments before I turn it over to Greg Doss of Council Central Staff. We like to start the conversation around this particular bill by recognizing that the Seattle Police Department's twenty twenty one hiring budget is and has always been fully funded. This legislation would not impact that. The legislation is scheduled for discussion and possible vote. And there's some background that has brought us to this moment. We've heard this bill in committee a couple times now. I believe this might actually be our third or fourth time. But in March, the monitor overseeing the consent decree sent some specific questions to the police department. The police department recently sent answers to those questions to the monitor. And as I noted on a few occasions now, the committee delayed additional considerations of the legislation in order to allow the police department to respond to the monitor. Because the monitors let us know in no uncertain terms that that was the expectation. The monitor has now responded to the police department's feedback on the bill and that email was shared with committee members last Friday. As far as just orienting us about the bill that we have in front of us now, the legislation before the committee provides a five point four million dollar investment to ameliorate the reduced number of officers, including funding for community service officers, crime prevention coordinators, fulfilling public information staffing requests recommended by the city auditor, funding for evidence storage as recommended by the inspector general, and some funding for civilian crisis response positions in the human services department. It cuts two million dollars from the police department budget and puts those dollars towards participatory budgeting. It makes available additional funding to the police department through the release of a proviso related to the salary savings that SPD is experiencing because of higher than anticipated attritions. So the fact that the monitor's email states that the court and the monitor are concerned about the reduction of funding to the police department, it goes on to say in particular, SPD is at risk at not being able to deliver key management and operational requirements as personnel have been allocated to fulfill critical patrol duties due to separations of officers. And the monitor goes on to emphasize that the consent decree is a legal agreement. So in recognition of that feedback, we are allowing for additional funding for SPD to use its salary savings to the tune of an additional five billion dollars in addition to funding the priority items that SPD has themselves identified for us in previous meetings in this bill. So the legislation before the committee, it's worth noting that the two million dollar cut that is still part of this bill, even though there's a two million dollar cut, there is an allowance, a release of a proviso that allows SPD to use five million dollars in salary savings. This is all in the context of a three hundred and sixty million dollar budget. And so those are my introductory remarks. I think I'll hand it over to Greg to sort of walk us through maybe a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning and good morning, members of the committee. Madam Chair, as always, you make my job very easy because you know the legislation really well. So I'm going to share my screen here and share a PowerPoint that I think will just more or less provide a visual for the, for the changes you were talking about. Okay, so ask if everyone can, can someone tell me verbally, you can see it, I can't see anyone.
We can see it.
Okay, great. So start out with an overview of what the substitute that is before the committee today does. The original bill, as you know, was introduced months ago in January. In the last Public Safety Committee meeting where this bill was heard, there was a substitution where the investments that Councilmember Herbold talked about were weaved into via amendment, weaved into the original bill. And so now we have a substitute bill that does many things. And so I'm going to provide a quick overview of those things and then tell you what today's proposed amendment would further. So just by way of background, the investments that Councilmember Herbold talked about are listed here on this table. What you can see on that top line, projected salary savings available, thirteen million dollars, that is actually an estimate made by Central Staff on April twenty seventh. It is sort of an up to estimate and it's an annual figure that if, given the separations that have happened so far this year, if we, if the department continues to see separations, but it levels out at some rate, then it's possible that SPD could see up to thirteen million dollars of savings in salary savings. If it does not level out, if it continues at the trends that are, that have been seen in the last several months, there will be more than thirteen thousand. But just for the conservative Central Staff estimate, we're saying up to thirteen thousand and hoping that trends return to something more normal. I'll stop right there because I, there may be questions on that and I want to make sure I'm saying that in a way that's understandable.
I am looking to see if there's any handbrakes. I'm not seeing any just yet.
Chair, I just want to, Greg, you've said thirteen thousand a couple times. I just want to make sure everybody knows it was thirteen million.
Yes, thirteen million. In my conservative estimate, there would be up to thirteen million in savings. If we continue to see the kinds of separations that we've seen in the last few months, there would be more. That's how I would summarize it. So moving into the investments.
Just before we do that, I just want to restate something that I think Councilmember Morales made in a previous meeting. That's not thirteen That's not $13 million that is floating around in SPD's budget now. That is your assessment of how much would be available over the course of a year?
That's correct. So that takes their current separations, which through the first quarter were 58, and their current hires, which through the first quarter were 30, and sort of projects out that they would have somewhere around nine more separations per month and somewhere around eight more hires per month. And if it worked out that way, at the end of the year, they would have $13 million in salary savings.
Right. And so just very high level, what this bill does, this substitute bill that we voted to have before us in our last meeting, very high level, it uses about $5.4 million to pay for a bunch of things, many of which SPD asked us to help them fund rather than doing the full $5.4 million cut. It funds $2 million for participatory budgeting instead of $5.4 million for participatory budgeting, but it also frees up $5 million in what is projected to be $13 million in salary savings to give SPD the flexibility that they have been requesting.
That is a good summary. I am not going to go too much into detail unless members have questions on these specific investments. I know we've been talking about it for several months, but let me know if you want me to go into detail on any of these specific investments. Okay, so the other major change in the substitute that currently sits before the committee is that it revised one of the provisos in the adopted budget, SPD 11B002. That proviso was holding $5 million in authority and requiring that the department not spend that money until a future appropriation had been made. That particular proviso is intended to capture salary savings that SPD accrues throughout the year. The substitute that is before you more or less eliminates that proviso and replaces it with a new proviso that would allow SPD access to that funding as long as they complied with some reporting requirements specifically around staffing so that the council could continue to watch the staffing situation at SPD. I'll stop and ask if there's any questions on that.
Greg?
Yeah.
So is there concern that SPD potentially wouldn't comply with those reporting requirements with, unless we lifted the proviso or did the phased in lifting of it? I guess I'm just trying to understand, do we have other ways as a council to compel that reporting rather than through, as we get those reports, releasing the proviso?
Thank you, Councilmember. The other way that you have to compel that reporting is through a statement of legislative intent. And you did that. You adopted a statement of legislative intent that asked them for regular monthly reports, reports that have historically been provided on a monthly basis or periodically. They go back and forth, but the department generally keeps the council up to date with detailed reports. Starting in January, the department stopped providing projections as part of those reports. And so no longer do those reports contain any information or any data on how many folks they expect to hire or how many folks they expect will leave. And so you have already asked them for that via the statement of legislative intent and they are saying that they are not going to be sending it. So this proviso is a step in a, in a further direction to try to compel them to provide that information. I'd say that in absolute fairness, there's really no way that anyone could have predicted what would have happened in the last six months in terms of separations. And it is understandable that they are hesitant to provide that data going forward. However, they do have access to information, specifically folks who have submitted their retirement paperwork or the number of recruits that they're planning to hire as they gather eligible folks out of the testing pool and as they interview them. So they have some capacity to do some projections, certainly more than the council does without that information. So this would ask them to continue sort of to do the best job that they could and provide that information to the council. Again, taking a step forward in requiring that information to be sent.
On a related question, Greg, has SPD indicated what they would use the salary savings for in the event that they were released per these conditions here?
SPD has said that they would use their salary savings for many of the items in this table. They have, indeed, the items in this table largely came from them. Many of them did anyways. The separation pay, the IT needs, the civilian staffing, additional resources for public disclosure, although not necessarily in this configuration. They have requested, they have indicated that they need to have evidence storage enhancements done. And so in a lot of ways, these are already SPD requests and would be used for, they would use their salary savings at least on the separation pay, the IT needs, and the civilian staffing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, going to move forward. So now I'm going to move into the amendment that is proposed today, that is before you.
Before you move into that, I just want to state that I have worked with you to develop this amendment. We were seeking Law Department review, which we got last night. This amendment has not been posted publicly. And so I am inclined, it is virtually the same as the version that my colleagues on this committee received on Friday, but I am inclined to hold the amendment to full council unless I hear otherwise from my colleagues, just out of an interest to make sure that the public has access to the amendment, which because of the late Law Department review, they were unable to get it posted to the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you like me to go over it or would you like to have me step back?
Very much, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I still do want you to go over it because I, you know, if colleagues feel strongly that we should act on it now, I want to hear that. And I want to have the benefit of the discussion around the amendment here in committee.
Okay, thank you. I'll move forward then. The most significant change that your amendment would make, Madam Chair, is that it would eliminate another proviso, another restriction on the department. There was 2.5 million proviso in the adopted, 2021 adopted budget that would require future ordinance, future authorization. And along with that proviso, a request that SPD and Labor Relations petitioned the Public Safety Civil Service Committee to authorize 35 out of order layoffs in accordance with the principles that the council identified in Resolution 31962 that was passed last year. You'll recall that many of the principles that are in that resolution have to do with officer misconduct specifically around sustained complaints. And so this was a hold on authority to see if there would be a way that layoffs could be focused on officers who had sustained miscomplaints and as part, or sustained misconduct complaints, sorry, tongue tied. And included in that would be officers that are part of what is called the Brady List. The Brady List is a disclosure of law enforcement officers whose involvement in a case as an arresting officer, investigator, or witness is in question because of a history of dishonesty or misconduct. And so the goal of this particular 2.5 million out of order layoff proviso was to identify those officers and see if they could be prioritized for layoff. It, over the last few months, has become clear that that is not possible for several reasons. The two most significant reasons are because the Public Safety Civil Service rules would allow any officer that was laid off, regardless of the reason, whether it was misconduct or other, to be placed on a reinstatement register and rehired when SPD is hiring new officers. As the chair has indicated, SPD is fully funded for their hiring plan. So any, and they are hiring as quickly and as much as they can. So placing an officer, a laid off officer, on a reinstatement register would just simply mean that they would be rehired. Additionally, the RCW precludes any adverse personnel action to be taken against a police officer solely because they're on the Brady List. And for these reasons, it becomes somewhat impractical to seek out of order layoffs specifically on the misconduct issue. So this amendment would eliminate that proviso, free up the 2.5 million for the department to be able to use. And then, as you can see in number two, it adds some intent language to explain why that proviso is being dropped. And I have just gone over that. So again, I'll stop and ask if there are any questions. Not hearing anything?
Council colleagues, any questions? Okay.
All right, so a couple more things that this.
Sorry, Councilmember Herbold. Sorry, I was a little delayed.
Go ahead. Let's go right ahead, Council President.
It was my fault. I was a little delayed. You know, I think not necessarily wanting to speak to the specific proposal here. I wanted to respond to your inquiry about whether or not the committee should hold on this amendment or take action now. I think several of us on this committee in a different context have had an opportunity to really wrestle with the underlying issue presented by the out of order layoff proviso that was originally adopted by the city council. I would be prepared to vote on this particular amendment if you, as the chair, decided to call it to a vote during committee today. And I just wanted to signal that preparedness for you as you think about how you want to manage this particular issue. It would be, as Council President, I'll just sort of say that it would be my preference that we resolve this policy debate related to Amendment One in the context of your committee as opposed to seeing debate on this particular amendment for full council.
Understood, thank you. That's exactly the kind of feedback I was looking for. Any other strong feelings about that issue here from other council members? All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just say I agree with Councilmember Gonzalez's comments for the same reasons that Councilmember Gonzalez stated and the thorough study of this particular proposal around lifting this proviso. And I would be prepared to vote on it today as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. All right. Greg, do you have anything further for us?
Just a couple quick things and then I'll step back. So there were findings, changes made to Section K, and these acknowledge the release of the $5 million salary savings proviso, the 2.5 million out of order proviso with the intention to allow SPD more flexibility in its budget to plan for emerging fiscal issues as well as staffing due to the shortage of officers as well as training needs. And then there are some technical corrections and changes that are made that I'm not going to go into now. And I can, if anybody has any questions, but they're relatively insignificant relative to the other changes. And now I'm going to ask if Ledge IT can stop sharing my screen because I seem to have an inability.
I have one question. On number three, Greg, this is discussing not just the proviso about out of order layoffs, but the $5 million salary savings proviso. Is that what the Council President had added to the budget last year?
Yes, that's the one that we talked about a little bit earlier. It more or less eliminates the $5 million salary savings proviso and then creates a new proviso that requires the staffing reports. And technically in the bill, it's an amendment, but it's a rather confusing thing. So I'm just going to simplify it by saying that the $5 million salary savings proviso that the Council President had added in the 2021 adopted budget is eliminated effectively.
By this amendment or by the fuller?
Actually, by the substitute that the committee has already adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. If there's no further discussion about whether or not we should move the amendment, I move Amendment One to Council Bill 119981. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion? Councilmember Swan?
Thank you, Chair Herbert. And I had points on both the amendment and the bill. And if you are okay with it, I'll just make all my points at once.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So as I said, I will speak to the amendment and the bill. It won't be any surprise to any members of the public that I am opposing this substitute amendment to essentially increase the police budget by an additional $2.5 million by lifting another proviso. The original proviso effectively said that the police could not access $2.5 million of their budget because the city council would look into out of order layoffs. And I will be voting no on the bill as a whole. And in fact, even without the amendment, it is a bill that has a net effect of increasing police funding. During the Justice for George Floyd movement, ordinary people filled the streets to demand the end of police violence and repression of peaceful protests. Thousands demanded Seattle defund the police by 50% to reduce the number of officers harassing communities of color and abusing peaceful protesters. Councilmembers who initially claimed to support that demand then began to use more and more Orwellian language to justify doing the opposite. Do councilmembers remember their promises to the Justice for George Floyd movement? Do councilmembers remember saying they support defunding the police by 50% last summer? Then do councilmembers remember saying that they cannot defund by 50% in 2020 because reducing the number of police officers would take up to four months, but they promised to do so in 2021? Then do councilmembers remember saying that they cannot reduce the number of officers in 2021 because they first need to research out of order layoffs? And as a side note, I would also note that doing police layoffs out of order was never a demand of the Black Lives Matter movement. Now councilmembers are saying that out of order layoffs of police are not possible. And so please forget that councilmembers ever promised to reduce the size of the police force. Frankly, in my view, this has become a farce. The first draft of the bill reduced the police department's budget by $5.4 million to compensate for the $5.4 million by which they illegally overspent their budget last year. Then the majority of this committee amended that original bill to make the police department budget reduction to $2 to $3 million instead of $5.4 million and at the same time to lift the $5 million proviso. As I explained last time when I voted no on that amendment, I'll quote my own points. Quote, "That means that the substitute bill as a whole cuts $2 to $3 million from the police and then gives the police access to $5 million." the police and then gives the police access to $5 million. So on balance, it increases the available police budget by over $2 million." As Malcolm X famously said, "If you stick a knife in my back nine inches and pull it out six inches, that's not progress," end quote. So now today's new substitute would release an additional $2.5 million to the police by lifting another proviso. If this amendment passes, then the net result of this bill will be to increase the police funding by a total of $4.5 million rather than cutting the police budget by $5.4 million. Essentially, the consequence for going over budget last year, the police department going over the budget last year, is for them to get extra money this year. This is what police accountability looks like to the political establishment. And as I said, I'm voting no on the substitution, and also on the bill as a whole, because it is no longer a bill to reduce the police budget, and has instead become a bill to increase the police budget. In the public comment, many people urged the council to amend this bill to return it to its original form of cutting $5.4 million. I would be happy to support an amendment like that. As a matter of parliamentary procedures, I am not permitted to make that motion because it would count as reconsidering the vote last time this bill was before the committee, and I was on the losing side of that vote, so I cannot propose reconsideration. But I do want to stress that if another council member made that motion, I would vote yes on it. I would also like to respond to the excuse that has been circulated, that the city council cannot defund the police without the agreement of the federal monitor. I want to be clear, councilmembers vote on the budget, not the federal monitor, and councilmembers are responsible for their own votes. If councilmembers agree with the federal monitor or any, agree with any other part of the political establishment, that is their decision. But I do not agree with the, the federal monitor or the political establishment, and my vote will reflect that. If councilmembers were serious about defunding the police, they would pass a budget that actually defends the police. What would Judge Roberts do? Place an injunction on the city budget as a whole in response to that? That is simply not a plausible or realistic scenario. So instead, we get letters from the federal monitor expressing concerns, and councilmembers are pretending those concerns are legally binding, which they are not. Of course, if councilmembers were serious about defunding the police, they would not be increasing the police budget in the first place. And in the last committee discussion, I quoted from my comments from the council meeting on December 14th of last year, when I was the only councilmember to vote no on the bill to give the Seattle Police Department an additional $5.4 million to essentially cover the millions they illegally spent on overtime they were not authorized to spend when they filled the streets with riot cops to abuse Black Lives Matter protesters. And at this point, I'm, you know, I'm quoting myself from past meetings, because this is happening again and again. At that time, I said, "I'm voting no on this supplemental budget, which gives the Seattle Police Department additional $5.4 million to fund the extra overtime they used abusing and intimidating the Black Lives Matter movement." Every city department has allocated a budget at the beginning of the year, and those are the funds they have available to do with whatever they want to do. Here we are in the last council meeting of the year, this is my comments from the December meeting, the same year that we had a historic Black Lives Matter movement, a year in which, under pressure from the street heat, the democratic establishment made sweeping promises to defund the police by 50%. We now hear the police have spent $5.4 million more than their budget, money that didn't belong to them, and are requesting retroactive permission for the millions in taxpayer money that they have stolen. They have taken this money in order to abuse the BLM movement, spending millions in overtime to fill the streets of Seattle with tear gas and other weapons, and they have taken this money for personal enrichment with individual officers amassing hundreds of thousands of dollars in overtime pay. Imagine a car thief who tells you that if you just retroactively give them your car, then they will not have stolen it. And the Seattle Police Department does this almost every year, to the point where the council even passed a resolution in the summer, so this was last summer, pledging to say no if the police make this request at the end of the year. Now is the test. Will councilmembers hold the line, or yet again backfill the already bloated police budget with renewed pledges to hold the line next year? Unfortunately, in the Finance and Housing Committee last week, again, this is from next year, councilmembers on the committee unanimously voted to approve this police funding this year while pledging to take it from next year's budget. But what, what did it mean at that time for councilmembers to say that they will take the money from next year's budget if councilmembers prove that they have no intention of holding the police to that budget? What if the police go over their budget by $5.4 million again in 2021, was a question I had asked then? Will the council hold the line then, or push it back another year? What if they go over by 20 million or 15 million in the years, in the coming years? So we can see that this is happening again and again. And in committee, public comment, community organizers have demanded that the council hold the line. But at this point, you know, and this is, again, these are points I'd already made in previous committees, but it is, it's, they're needing to be made again. This is not even holding the line. This is, the line has been moved back with no guarantee that it will not move again and again and again. In fact, there is everything to indicate, all the evidence statistically indicates that it will be actually moved back in favor of the police again and again. Of course, the reality is this is not about lines or promises or resolutions, or even the goodwill of elected officials. It is about the power of grassroots social movements on the streets. It was for, it was not a coincidence that it, at, at the height of tens of thousands of Seattleites being on the streets, that is when democratic councilmembers made promises to defund. It was not a coincidence that a couple of months later, when the protests had reduced, the promises were also reneged on. The lesson for our movements is that we must depend on our own strength. And last but not least, I think it is crucial for working people to get organized and fight for an elected community oversight board with full powers over the police, including hiring and firing, subpoena powers, and policies and procedures. My observation from having talked to hundreds of thousands, hundreds of people in a politically broad spectrum, is that even the working people who are not sure about defunding also strongly support an elected community oversight with full powers of the police, and it's a demand that will not only help bring real accountability, obviously, it's not going to be a panacea, but it is going, it is an important step, it will be an important step forward for police accountability, and it will unite working people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Swan. Any other comments on the amendment? I have just a few words I want to share. You know, there's been a lot of conversation about the role of the consent decree, and I think reasonable people can disagree, but I think what is clear is that we do have a monitor, and that monitor's role is to monitor our compliance with the consent decree. And that monitor, when he wrote to us last week, said, "In order to sustain compliance, the city is responsible for providing necessary support and resources to SPD in order to fulfill its obligations under the settlement agreement. Now is the time to allocate resources to SPD at levels that will enable the city to close out the consent decree efficiently, effectively, and sustainably." So the, the monitor's position seems to be that a $2 million budget cut in the context of this $360 million police department budget could somehow put SPD in the position of not being able to deliver key management and operational requirements, even given that we were, that the, the, the version of the bill that the, that the monitor reviewed included this lift of the $5 million proviso. It is a lift of the $5 million proviso in a way that is scaled, and so that is why I'm proposing to lift this additional $2.5 million proviso, knowing that we cannot fulfill the objectives of the proviso. Even though I'm, I'm struggling to understand how the monitor can suggest that funding can solve SPD's training and patrol staffing challenges, right? These are the, the, the items that the monitor says that he's concerned about relate to staffing and, and training, and specifically that, that supervisors are, are, are being moved from training to, to fill patrol staffing challenges. These are all not problems that can be solved with dollars, they are problems that can be solved with additional staffing, and the council has fully funded the 2021 staffing plan. Nevertheless, you know, I, I, I do feel that the, that the, the monitor's role in this instance is a role that must be considered by this council. The, the monitor speaks to the, to the court on a, on a weekly, regular basis, and I do not want to have the city be found to not be in compliance with, with the consent decree. And so that's why I'm reluctantly bringing forward this, this additional proviso. And seeing no further comment, will the clerk please call the wall?
I'm sorry, I had my hand raised, sorry.
Oh, you certainly did. Council, Council President Gonzalez.
Thanks, that's okay. So I wanted, I wanted to just add a little bit about the, the consent decree comments as well, and, and, and I just want to say that, that, you know, sort of the consent decree is, is a legal reality, and it is a legal obligation for the city of Seattle. This is, i- i- it is subject to a settlement agreement, which is a legally binding document on the city of Seattle as it relates to ongoing efforts to reform and make sure that this police department continues to be and enhances its accountability in the area of, of police reform and misconduct. And so, so that, that is, that is a, a, a reality of the context and the environment in which we are being asked to make ongoing decisions within our charter mandated duties and responsibilities to also consider budget appropriations for each of the departments. But there is no question that in the context of exercising our authority as budget appropriators in the city of Seattle, we have to, we, we have to, in this context, also exercise that obligation within the context of knowing that we are subject to a legally binding document that requires us to consult with and be supervised by and ordered under, under, you know, threat of contempt of, of court orders. We, we have to make these decisions within that, that context. So I wanted to emphasize that point that you made, Chair Herbold, because I do think, I do think it's getting lost in the, in the debate and the discussion here, both in the public and perhaps within our virtual chambers. I, I am concerned about this particular proviso, specifically because I think I have a slightly different reading of the federal court monitor's email to us that came to us last week. I, I, I think that he continues to be concerned about any kind of budget reductions, and, and while I disagree perhaps with his perspective that we shouldn't be making any budget decisions at all, I, I still am concerned that, that lifting this $5 million proviso now will, will create a disadvantage to us in the fall budget process. And so my, my preference on the $5 million proviso that I sponsored during the, the budget process would be that we consider lifting it in the context of understanding sort of at the end of the year what the salary savings were, and I think that also positions the city council to, to identify how we would want to spend these unused dollars outside of the police department. My recollection is that that is how we have done it in the past, in terms of the, the process and the timing, and, and so for, for those reasons, I have concerns about the, the $5 million lifting of the $5 million proviso as part of Amendment One.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. The lifting of the $5 million proviso is not in Amendment One, it's in the base bill. It's, right.
Amendment One is just about the provi, is just about the provisos around the out of order layoffs.
Correct.
Okay. So, on the out of order layoffs, so now I've spoken to the underlying bill, so sneak peek. The, the over, the, is it released to the out of order layoffs? I want, I, I think it's really important to share with members of the viewing public that, that at the time that I was supportive of the out of order layoffs proviso, I, I truly, I truly believe we were going to be able to accomplish it. We had, we had, you know, some indication within the public safety civil service rules that indicated that out of order layoffs were, were possible to achieve if the chief of police would advocate to that body, the, the desire and the wish to do so. So it, unfortunately, I feel like I have exhausted every avenue possible to evaluate whether or not we could effectuate the intent behind the proviso and accomplish the goal of out of order layoffs. And in that exercise, every single time I thought we, we found an answer and a way to do it, we would open up yet another Pandora's box of yet another layer built into our legal framework from, from, you know, decades before any of us were here struggling with these questions that, that have effectively shielded and protected even those officers laid off for, for lying, or biased policing, or being convicted of a crime. Even if we were able to lay off those specific officers who have been found of significant misconduct in the past, even if we were able to lay those individuals off, the moment there was an opportunity to hire new officers back to the police force, those officers in that pool had the right, have the right of first refusal. I think that effectively frustrates our entire policy goal of focusing our efforts on out of order layoffs on those who frankly, you know, do not meet the, the high standards that we expect of those individuals who do serve as officers within the Seattle Police Department. So as a result, unfortunately, that, that means to me that we will not be able to effectuate the goal of out of order layoffs. That however, should not be translated into saying that layoffs would or should never occur. It simply means that the, that the concept of doing out of order layoffs in order to, you know, prioritize identifying individuals who cannot fulfill their full functions as a police officer because of prior misconduct may, may not, is not achievable. And so I just want to make sure that folks understand that that doesn't mean that layoffs can occur. It means that the proviso is really about how layoffs might occur, and, and I think we have run the course of evaluation on, and realizing that out of, the out of order mechanism for achieving any layoffs is, is, is not feasible, nor will it, will it fulfill the original policy goals that were fueling the support of that proviso.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, in addition to our own Public Safety Civil Service Commission rules, there's actually a prohibition that we, that we discovered earlier this year in state law passed in 2018 for taking any adverse action against an officer that is on the Brady list. So I, myself, there, there was some, there was some Brady list related bills in the state legislature this year. I testified to have that language changed, and that is not one of the reforms that, that moved forward. I, I saw Councilmember Lewis, I see your hand up, yes.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Herbold. You know, I, I just similarly wanted to, as someone who went on that similar journey with some of the other members of this committee in looking into the out of order layoffs for people, officers that are on the Brady list. Just to dovetail on your last comment, Councilmember Herbold, I think this is a really prime issue for interim, to work with our legislative delegation in the run up to the next session, to really, really put an emphasis on this. You know, we, we kind of found these revelations of some of the issues in the state law- a little bit later in the session. So I think with the run-up to the next one, this is a really prime area to really work together with um our partners inside and outside City Hall for this really critical reform. Um I think it is unbelievably counter to the public policy interest that officers on the Brady list are so insulated and protected um from this kind of accountability. And it was really discouraging to see that. And the solution to that sits in some essential changes to state law. And I look forward to those conversations over the interim to craft those policies and fight for them in the next session.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
This roll is for Amendment One, Council President, Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
No.
Councilmember Sawant.
No.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Three in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. Um so next, we'll move into the underlying bill. I move uh Council Bill 119981 as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the amended version of Council Bill 119981? Councilmember Morales, yes, please.
Thank you. Um. This has been a frustrating process, I will say. I think we're all feeling a little frustrated by the things that we're learning along the way as we try to hold ourselves accountable to the changes that we uh want to make on behalf of community to the way that our our police department works and the way that the city funds the department. Um so I I want to say that um I would support this bill um if it was still following the original intent, which was to enforce budget accountability for SPD. Um but this amendment doesn't just change the this this new bill, um doesn't just change the bill, it reverses the impact of what we intended, and I can't support it. Um I think we need to reinstate the proviso, uh Council President Gonzalez's proviso on the $5 million in future savings. Um and I'm sort of in the same boat with uh Councilmember Sawant in not being able to move that forward. So I am here for somebody else to do that. I think it's important to note that SPD um has already acknowledged themselves that they could absorb the $5.4 million reduction through their salary savings. And that the recent request is mostly mostly for new items that weren't identified in the previous requests. Um if they find later in the year or early next year that they have additional needs, they could come back to council and request those funds. There's no reason to provide this now. Only item in the list provided that they are legally obligated to pay is the separation pay at $1.8 million. Again, salary savings anticipated for this year could cover that amount. So you know, there's there's uh $2.8 million for new technologies, including a early intervention system, uh which, by the way, SPD has been funded for already for the last 10 years, and that hasn't done anything, improve use-of-force violations law uh in the department. Um in fact, the department uh requires for an officer to have six different incidents before they're even um assessed into that program. So it doesn't do anything to prevent uh prevent use-of-force violations. Um in 2015, city audit of SPD public disclosure found serious issues with department uh that weren't keeping track of of information. Um they made the the report made several recommendations to the department. Uh as far as we know, the department has taken no action on those. And in fact, in the last six years, um uh you know, there haven't been any real improvements made to that. So I think the recent news that the texts of the former chief have gone missing is another indication that the department is not serious about fulfilling this obligation. We also know there's a history of unchecked abuse of overtime. Uh 2016 auditor's report found that SPD had significant gaps in controls. Weren't they weren't collecting data about overtime, and they didn't review their totals of overtime either. Um so and since then, the department has made very few changes there. So there's just a pattern of um even when the department is audited and recommendations are made of how to improve accountability, those recommendations not being followed. SPD is choosing to prioritize um their transfer of 100 officers out of specialty units into the Community Response Group. That is what has resulted in fewer staffing in the specialty units, and it's easily remedied by moving those officers back to their units. The department claims that 911 response time is a priority, but these officers don't respond to 911, respond to protests. So even when they're counted as 911 responders, um as was reported in the March 9th presentation to this committee, um the response time is actually no different. So the department has the officers it needs. Where they choose to deploy them is up to the department, obviously, but they can't then use that as an excuse to say that they need additional funding for um for the staffing issues. So this is this is a funding crisis of the department's own making. They decided to overspend on overtime last summer. Giving more funding won't prevent crime. It won't address the homelessness issue in our city. It won't reduce substance abuse. It won't improve mental health outcomes for our community members. Only investing in community services and solutions uh will do that. And that's what community has been asking for, a shift in the way we allocate our public dollars. Our goal should be investing in a way that changes community conditions, lead to better health and better well-being. Rewarding SPD for overspending outside of its budget authority will accomplish that. Um so I will be voting no on this bill.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Any other comments or thoughts? Not seeing any raised hands, oh, real a real raised hand? Yes.
A real one.
Yes.
Uh well, thank you so much, um Councilmember Herbold. I know this one has this bill has been really, really difficult and challenging um to to deal with. And so I appreciate the position that you're in, and I appreciate that you are um working towards developing um a a thoughtful threading of the needle here to allow us to move forward on this. Um unfortunately, I I um for different reasons than have already been stated um by my colleagues on this committee, also plan to vote no on this on this bill. Um again, for for slightly different reasons, some shared reasons, but slightly different reasons that are going to lead to my position um to not ultimately support passing this bill. So it had been my hope that um over the last several months and that we would be able to um come to some consensus with the department, with stakeholders, uh with the mayor's office, amongst us and council, um as it relates to this $5.4 million um dollar proposal. I know that at the end of the year, um the position on the executive side was to um oppose it and not be supportive of the bill. I think that positions have sadly only further entrenched um since we have first introduced this bill at the end of the year. And um at this point, I feel like we have a a proposed piece of legislation before us that um everyone is um uh for their own reasons unhappy with. And so I think that that um unfortunately, that leaves me in a position to um not be able to support this this bill for for that reason, but also um because I think that the council would be better served waiting until later in the year to take action um related to these proposed cuts and to the proposals um related to lifting of my $5 million proviso. We know that, excuse me, we know that the executive is going to be back before the council um here pretty soon in September with proposed uh uh budget changes to the Seattle Police Department's budget. This could take the form of grant acceptances, special events, um you know, cost staffing, overtime cost, separation pay, paid family medical leave reimbursements, you know, the list probably goes on. And and I think that these are issues that may need to be addressed, certainly through a quarter three supplemental ordinance. But then um we will also have another opportunity to consider SPD's full um holistic budget during the fall um fall budget process. And and I think right now, what is missing for me is that we don't know in which direction, whether it's going to be an increase or a decrease in the budget that these actions um will need to take. And so, you know, months from now, the council, I think, will have much more flexibility and much more accurate information about um, you know, how to find some 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 real precision around around the budget and and actions that might be necessary in order to thread the needle in a way that um may be more satisfactory to those who we are hearing from. So um I I am I am unfortunately not going to be able to support um the bill the bill today, but I understand um that, you know, we have, I think, exhausted our debate process in committee um and 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 would support moving forward on this bill with a vote today, even if it's a divided report with a recommendation not to pass um the bill. I still think um, you know, Chair Herbold, I think you have um run the course in your com- committee um work sessions on this bill. And um if that's how the vote ends up, then um you know, then the then the full council will will have the committee's recommendation one way or the other. And um and we can be prepared to move forward on um um this, you know, uh budget issue in full council as needed.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh before I move to uh Councilmember Lewis, who I see has his hand up, um I I do want to ask um what I hope is um a clarifying question. Um, Madam President, given your um comments about the seriousness of the role of the monitor um to basically supervise the city as it relates to um obligations under the consent decree, are you not concerned that top continuing to tie up $7.5 million in budget authority um will not um draw the the supervision um of of the monitor? Um I mean, we're we're not just hearing, don't cut the police department's budget um from the monitor. We're also hearing from SPD that they are seeking that additional flexibility associated with um lifting the provisos. And that is the spirit in which um I'm uh I I thought we we voted in our last committee meeting for the substitute, which included the lifting of the $5 million proviso um as well as the the today's um amendment. Um was out of concern that um the monitor um would flag for the judge the fact that um we are um holding $7.5 million um that the police department cannot access.
Um yeah, I appreciate the the question. I mean, I do think sort of functionally, there's a difference between a proviso and a and a and a budget cut. Um proviso does it does, you know, does sort of um restrict the spending of the dollars, but doesn't um categorically reduce the the budget further for um for the department. Now, that that sort of setting that um definitional exercise aside, um you know, my my reading of the communications I have seen from Chief Diaz to the monitor has indicated that this bill um as amended is too restrictive i- and doesn't actually fulfill flexibility. So I think unfortunately, that the um that the federal police, federal court police monitor, based on my reading of his communications, agrees with that perspective as expressed by SPD. So I'm not sure that we are we are um I think we we want to have that flexibility in order to fulfill the intent of the consent decree and our obligations of the consent decree. Um but um I don't think that the court or the federal police monitor will agree with our perspective that this bill accomplishes that flexibility goal. And so um so for that reason, I think, you know, being in a status quo position of where we ended last year, um which did include the proviso, is is a bit of a um no foul, no harm position as it relates to our relationship with the consent decree.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. This is a question for for Greg Doss, but I think Councilmember Gonzalez just answered it. So effectively, you know, were this matter, this bill to be ultimately not passed uh at full council? So even if it comes out on a divided um uh, you know, uh minority voting in favor of it, uh and then it went to full council and didn't pass, we would essentially be back to where we were with the budget we passed in November with everything in there unaltered is essentially what the outcome would be of not passing anything. Uh but I see Council um uh Member Herbold nodding. Uh but you know, I just throw that over to Greg, too, just to clarify.
Yes, that's correct. Um there would be continued restrictions on the salary savings of $5 million, and there would be continued restrictions on the out-of-order layoffs of $2.5 million.
And there would also not be the additional $2 million for participatory budgeting uh that we indicate in this bill.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, just wanted to clarify that.
Now, we could pull out the $2.5 million provisos related to out-of-order layoffs, correct? And run that as a separate bill?
Um that is absolutely the council's um purview to do so.
But not today. All right. Oh, thank you. Um as uh Council President Gonzalez has said, we have um we've exhausted debate on on this bill uh that was introduced back in December. So um with that, I am going to um uh ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Gonzalez.
No.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
No.
Councilmember Sawant.
No.
Chair Herbold.
Yes.
Two in favor, three opposed, no one abstaining.
Thank you so much. So um the vote is two to three against, and the um recommendation will be to not pass the bill. This recommendation with a divided report will be sent to the full city council. And under the council rules, the legislation will not go the immediate full city council meeting, but the following Monday. Um and that will be um May 24th. Um and with that, uh the next Public Safety and Human Services Committee is scheduled for May 25th. Before we adjourn, are there any other comments for the good of the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.